Yeah, are you, yeah, feel free to go ahead and drop in.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, it takes some time to get on, so.
Right.
Not a bad idea, just go ahead and drop on.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, hopefully. Alright. Hey, Sina. We have three on the regular and three on the joint. Yeah, we did it on the landmark commission, um, and we did it on council. And so essentially, the really, the only difference is obviously we'll be on a Zoom meeting and we'll do a roll call vote. And the way we did it before was basically, you know, I'll kind of open the meeting in the housekeeping kind of way. And then turn it over to you as the chairman to kind of run the meeting itself. But, but in terms of running the Zoom, I'll do all that. Okay, yeah, see if you can get on. Okay. Hey, Tara.
You doing a Zoom pre-meeting meeting?
Yep, trying. We're gonna give it a shot.
Is it the same link for your, for your regular meeting?
It's the one she sent out again this morning.
Yeah, okay.
Whichever one you got this morning should, that's, that should be it.
Okay. Well, may, maybe I'll see you there.
Okay, we'll see.
Keep your fingers crossed.
Yeah, really. I just got a call from Sina, he's in Charlotte. So he's gonna try to do it from Charlotte.
Oh, great.
Yeah, right. Okay. Bye.
Hey, Chris.
Hey, Chris.
You all can hear me?
Yeah, here you are. What's going on?
Not too much. This may be being broadcast to our city channel, so.
Okay, so don't say anything bad. No bad words. It says "love" on YouTube. At the top.
I think we're gonna assume it is. Tyron, how are you?
Hey, Tyron. Your microphone's muted. There you go.
I can hear you. I'd unmute. You can hear me now.
Yep.
How we doing?
Good. How are you?
I'm good. What I was saying was, you're live on YouTube.
Yeah, I just put that message out that I think we are live on YouTube, so.
And YouTube is delayed.
Do I have audio, Chris?
Yes, we can hear you fine.
Okay.
And just that far, we are live on the city's YouTube channel. Tom, good afternoon. Can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good.
Hey, Tom.
Hi, guys.
How are you doing?
Good. How are y'all?
Good.
I just got a call from Sina. He is in Charlotte. But he's gonna attempt to log on, so we'll just give everybody a few more minutes here.
I've lost y'all.
We could still see you.
Okay, well. Let me see if I can find you again.
Lynda Kay, can you hear us?
I can hear you, yeah. I can't get you back in visual again. Let me see what I can do. I may have to... Let me exit and I'll come back.
Okay. Sina, can you hear?
There you are. Hi, Sean.
Hello? Hello?
Sina, are you able to hear us?
Hello?
I can hear you.
Hello? Hello?
Here, can you hear us?
This is Tahir Rashi.
Here, we can hear you. Can you hear us? Sina, can you hear us?
Sina cannot hear us. I just texted him.
Oh.
Can you guys hear us? That's Sean Jovin.
Yes, Sean.
Sean, we can hear you.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Sina says his speaker and microphone are on, but he can't hear us.
Okay.
I'm glad we have 30 minutes.
You're gonna need all of it.
Yep. I told Sina to restart.
Sina, can you hear us yet? Sina, can you hear us yet?
We heard that. Sina, is that you saying hello?
Hello?
I think we can hear you now. Sina, can you hear us? Sina, can you hear us yet?
Does anybody else have any problems? It dropped to me.
I'll still see you, Tyron.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Had to restart. It dropped to me. It's gonna run out of time, Chris.
Sina, any luck?
State of line one, state of line one.
City of Belmont, planning and zoning, maybe. It's an old mail. Yeah, thank you.
Lynda, can you hear us yet?
Hello?
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 Yes.
Yes.
It's Eddie. Eddie Senegal.
Eddie, they put us from home.
Yeah, I'm trying to... Hey, Sina, can you hear us?
I can hear you, sir.
Okay, good deal.
Hello?
Can you hear? Can you hear us? Okay, this may be as good as it's gonna get. Sina, you can hear us?
I can hear you, yes.
Okay, perfect, perfect. Okay. Let me go ahead and we'll start running through the... Through the slideshow. And, you know, we've done this before once with the Landmark Commission. It worked okay. The only difference really is gonna be, we'll need to do a roll call vote. And so Kathy Allen, who's on your screen there, she will kind of orchestrate the roll call vote when it comes to that. But let me real quickly... Go ahead and run through the slideshow.
Hey, Chris, could I make a suggestion that everybody mute their microphones until they have something to say?
Yeah, good suggestion. Okay, if y'all can just nod if you can see the PowerPoint. So, again, just housekeeping, we will kind of open the meeting as normal. We do have a set of debates from March 6th. Does anyone have? Anyway, we do have minutes from March 16, 2020. If y'all are prepared to do that. Once we get to that point.
I can barely hear you.
Okay. Okay, Sina, can you hear me now?
Yeah, and I can see the screen.
Okay, good. Okay.
Everyone's not muted is what it is. There's some background noise.
Let me see if I can mute. Okay. Can everyone still hear me? Okay. Okay, so the first item, we still have about 10 minutes, so we'll run through these quickly. The first item is a request for preliminary plat approval with Windermere subdivision, section four, lot 25. The first item is a request for preliminary plat approval with Windermere subdivision, section four, lot 25, block nine, lots three through 15, block 10, and lots one through three, and 11 through 16, block 11. And this is Fitz and Shipman, they're requesting a preliminary plat approval for this subdivision. And let me get back to it. Okay, so this in front of us is what's being proposed, and if you see Wind Castle Drive there, that is going to essentially complete this phase. I will say that yeah, that's the only slide we're gonna have. After the planning staff reports went out, we did receive some comments from engineering and waters. And they're fairly detailed, so all, unless y'all want to hear them, there's about 12 of them. And they're fairly technical in terms of showing sewer lines and materials of pipes and things like that, but I'll read through them in the regular meeting. But again, these are conditions that engineering and water added after the fact that I think they do want them added as conditions on the subdivision plat, so with that, are there any questions? Okay. The next item on the agenda is Marmine addition, but it's actually, we are not, it has not been put on the agenda yet because the submission we have has some inaccurate information. There's a house that's on lot 3A that is no longer there, and there's a new house being built. So we're working with the applicant to get that corrected, so we expect that will be on the agenda at next meeting. And the final item on the regular meeting is a replat of West Haven Terrace lots one through two, block two. The purpose of this subdivision is to simply combine the lots. The homeowner wants to add an accessory building. And by combining the lots, this would allow them to add the accessory building on the lot, on the location lot where they where they prefer. Let's see. Okay. The first item on the joint meeting is a request for a specific use permit, permit to allow a bar in the GCMD, General Commercial District, at 35 North 11th Street. This, you're probably familiar with the strip center on 11th Street, just north of South, or Smart, rather. This is an overhead view of the strip center. This is a layout of the site plan. And this is a subject property. Again, you're probably all familiar with this center located on 11th Street. This is a view across the street. Any questions on that? This, there was a bar at this location, but it closed for more than a year, and as a result, had lost its specific use permit authorization, so staff is recommending approval. Any questions on that? Okay, if not, we have, the next item is 2413P, and it's a request for a specific use permit to allow a second dwelling on one lot for a property zone RS, single family. So you can see here, this is all Valmont-Fla. There's a house. And you can see the lot outlined here, and this is the proposed layout. Well, this is the house in question, and what they want to do is construct a second house. They're describing it as a pool house, however, if you look at the site plan, it contains multiple rooms, bedrooms, bathrooms, kitchens, and so as such, I believe it's two stories, it meets the definition of a second dwelling in an RS district, so as such, we believe a specific use permit is required to allow this. Any questions on that? Okay. And then finally, the third and final item is 2414P, which is a request for a specific use permit to allow a wholesale shrimp company in an LI, Light Industrial District, at 5620 Avenue A. And again, I apologize, Charles keeps trying to share his screen. Okay, so again, outline in red is the property on Avenue A. This is an aerial view of the property. This is a site plan, and it is in, as you can tell, it's in a light industrial area, light industrial zone. But given the fact that it's a wholesale seafood processing, we believe it does need the specific use permit and your review. Staff is recommending approval. And the applicant has also indicated to us that that they intend to not store any, I guess, refuse of the processing of the seafood, that they intend to deliver it directly to the, to the landfill, so I know that would be a concern for neighbors as well as us, but that's, that's what they told us. Any questions on that one? If not, again, I appreciate your patience with this process. Our hope is that this will be our first and last Zoom Planning Commission meeting, but if unfortunately it's not, they'll probably have to get better at it. So again, I appreciate your, your your patience, and we will, we will start the, the regular meeting here in about five minutes.
Commissioner Senegal called, and so he's trying to get in on the phone.
Okay, yeah, I've got a couple in the waiting room, I'll see if I can get them in.
Do we shut this down? Do we just stay on?
I think we just stay on, so if y'all want to go, you know, grab a cup of coffee or some water, we'll just reconvene here in, in in about five minutes. So yeah, I would, I would definitely keep your, your setup on.
Still don't hear anything?
We can hear you.
We can hear you.
Okay.
Have meetings started yet?
Not yet.
Okay.
Sina, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, I can.
Thank you.
Are we ready?
Just one second. Okay, Sina, I think we're ready when you ask.
Okay, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Sina Najjar, and welcome to our first virtual planning and zoning meeting of June 15, 2020. Will we, could we have the roll call, please?
Chairman Najjar?
Here.
Commissioner Beatty? Commissioner Javi?
Here.
Commissioner Little is absent. Commissioner Macon?
Here.
Commissioner Noyola?
Here.
Commissioner Karishi? Commissioner Karishi? Commissioner Senegal? Commissioner Senegal? And Commissioner Steinhegen?
Here.
Uh, great. Would, if I would like to ask everyone present to state your name before they, they present a motion. And we have distributed the minutes of the previous meeting, and I'll ask for a, a motion to approve.
Roy Steinhegen makes a motion to approve.
Noyola, let's check. Perfect, we have a, we have a motion to approve and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 And in opposition? Okay, we don't have any opposition, so it passes unanimously. Great, with that, we can start on our first regular meeting, Mr. Boone. And if you would do me a favor, Mr. Boone, when you go through the, the items, if you please state the page number that you're on, so everybody can, can zoom into it.
Okay, yes, sir, so can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
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 Okay, good. Okay, so we are on on the top item of the regular agenda, and it is a request for preliminary plat approval of Windermere subdivision, section four, lot 25, block nine, lots three through 15, block 10, and lots one through three, and 11 through 16, block 11, Beaumont-Jefferson County, Texas. Mr. Tristan Fitz and Shipman has requested preliminary plat approval of Windermere subdivision, section four. This 5.52, excuse me, 5.5257 acre development will connect the two ends of Wind Castle Drive and this of 23 residential lots. All lots meet the requirements for a residential lot of the zoning order. Water and sewer will be provided by an extension of the city's facilities. Section 26.03.02A7 of the subdivision of the United States, proposed plan of the subdivision stones showing streets, lots, lots, alleys, easements, building lines, parks, and other such areas with prints of community. The plan shall show how the streets and easements in the subdivision will connect with those in the surrounding subdivisions. Should be short, pointed out that lots 14 and block 10 do not have building setbacks or easements shown. In addition, the plat does not show how or where these easements will tie into existing property to the west. And I also need to add, as I mentioned in the pre-development, or our pre-meeting, after our staff reports went out, we did receive some additional comments, review comments from the city engineer, as well as the water utilities design manager. Let me go ahead and read those to you. And then I believe we have Fitz and Shipman representative, one, they may be able to add additional. So with that, let me go ahead and read through those comments. Number one, request for Windermere subdivision master plan. Observe proposed Wind Castle Drive right away bit that 50 feet retreat width that 8 feet. Observe existing Windermere drive width of 26 feet. twenty-six feet, uh, front of perfect place of her. Condition number two is building lines and utility easement lines need to be continued on block ten, uh, lot through lot thirteen, lot fourteen and fifteen. Uh, number three, turnout on block ten between lots thirteen and fourteen need to be, uh, demoed. Number four, left of Wind Meadow Drive label between block eleven, lot eleven and block nine, lot twenty-five, miscellaneous thirty inch label. Uh, no H D P E will be allowed. Number six, uh, the drainage plan, uh, they're asking for Manning's coefficient N shall be greater than or equal to zero point zero one three. So those are the city engineers' comments. Kathy, say, I'll go for a copy of this, if it does enter into the record. Uh, so the comments from water are as follows. Uh, number one, the existing sixty-foot utility easement is listed on the preliminary plat, but is not illustrated on the plat. It is not clear whether the existing water incentive to your utility are within the limits. Number two, no clarification is given whether the existing utility would be vacant from the final filing of the plat, rather. Uh, next, regarding sanitary sewer, uh, the sanitary sewer line along Wind Castle Drive is existing, and the material is listed- the material is listed R C P, but our records indicate it's P C P. And then two, the tree line extension within the ten foot and three easement, and not the two, the ten foot is not recorded. That will also be in stock. These are part of the property's underground water network. Three, the post sewer lining extension on Windcrest Drive must tie to a manhole on Wind Castle Drive. Number four, the service for lot one on Windcrest Drive shall connect on Windcrest Drive and not on Wind Castle Drive. Uh, next, regarding water, number one, a temporary flush will be required at the end of Wind for Drive. Number two, no water meters are shown for lots thirteen through fifteen on Wind Castle Drive. And the three, water utilities will make the tap and set the meters at the time of house construction for lots one through three on Windcrest Drive. And finally, number four, the existing water line appears to be located at the proposed right-of-way, lots eleven through thirteen on Windcrest Drive. So again, I know that's a lot, and they're fairly technical, uh, but I guess I would, we may want to ask Fitz and Shipman representative if, if they're prepared to move forward with those comments, or if, uh, maybe additional time to review. But with that, are there any questions?
Uh, Chris, with, with the number of comments that we have, this seems like that maybe, maybe this request was premature. Uh, does the engineering think that they can, uh, properly review this by, by just assuming that the applicant understands their comment, or should we ask him to resubmit?
Well, I think I would ask the applicant if they're, um, comfortable moving forward with the preliminary plat, um, based on that, or if they feel like they need additional time to meet with our engineering staff.
Uh, let me ask you this. Uh, the city engineer had six comments. Where were the second sets of comments?
Uh, well, this, the second set was from John Pippin's water utilities design manager.
How, how many co- items did he have?
Uh, total, uh, ten.
Ten, and the, uh, the water department had four?
Um, well, that was, the water department was ten, the city, city engineer had six.
And what was the four items? You just read another four items. That was the sewer?
Well, so, water utilities design manager has, let's see, he actually has comments on, he says general comments, sanitary sewer comments, water, and then water comments. And I think they've broken the comments into engineering, general, sanitary, and water.
Okay. All right. Uh, is there any questions for, uh, for Chris?
No.
Uh, is the applicant, uh, in the meeting?
Yes, this is Ben Tristain with Fitz and Shipman, fourteen zero five Corner Song Court.
Uh, Ben, good afternoon. Uh, we have your address correct? You just stated it.
Yes, fourteen zero five Corner Song Court.
Good. Uh, Ben, do you understand these comments from the city engineer?
Yes, we received comments, uh, la- late last week, and then, uh, we returned back, uh, some revised plans as of Friday morning. Um, however, I, I believe that was, uh, past the day where this can be updated on, on our agenda.
Okay. So, uh, do you feel confident that you, you have covered all these items?
Yes.
A- any, any questions, or do you have some from any of them?
The, the main concern is that the water and sewer were installed back in the eighties when phase one was constructed, and so we had the city do a locate, find and locate, and when they marked the plans, uh, with the water lines, we surveyed them and incorporated them into our plans, and so that is why I, I believe some of the existing water lines cross over to the, uh, easement beyond the right-of-way. However, um, I would like to, uh, investigate more with the city staff to see if that indeed is, is the locations of the water and sewer.
And, uh, if it's not, what's gonna happen?
Uh, like I said, we, we will, uh, be able to make accommodations to, uh, appease, um, the water department.
Does this mean that you have to re, redo, uh, easements?
Uh, well, there's an existing easement that was dedicated back in the eighties, and that's pretty much where the new right-of-way is located at.
But you don't know if the pipes are in that easement or not?
Correct. Like I said, we did a locate, they located them, and we shot the, the markings. However, as they laid, um, they're kind of, um, sporadic in their alignment.
Yeah. Uh, is there any other questions from the commi- commissions? I'm, I'm kinda a little uncomfortable continuing with this, not knowing exactly where the pipes are, and if they're in the easement or not, because if they're not, then that, that would affect how you have divided your property, and it's gonna maybe eat, eat your property, so.
It's the, uh, the lines were, like I said, laid back in the eighties, uh, in the alignment that we, that we followed for the new right-of-way. Um, like I said, I wasn't sure what their tolerance is for the locate, you know, was their, um, you know, the accuracy of the, of the locating of the lines themselves, because they were, they are pretty deep, almost about twenty feet deep, so.
Okay, well, it, uh, it sounds like you're confident that you guys can, can work this out, then?
Yes, sir.
All right. Uh, again, any questions from anybody on the, uh, commission? Great. Uh, Chris, does this require public, uh, participation?
No, sir.
No, sir, no, sir.
Okay, great. Uh, so we've heard from Chris, and, uh, we have heard from the applicant. He understands there are a number of, uh, corrections that, that he has made, or there are some other corrections that needs to be made. Uh, so with that, uh, I ask for a motion.
I make a motion that we approve preliminary pat, plat, Windermere subdivision, section four, with all of the, uh, conditions that were listed earlier.
My second, with all these conditions.
Great. Uh, Chris, would you be kind enough to make sure that when we write the, uh, write the, the memo, that the conditions are individually stated, please?
Yes, sir.
Great. Uh, so we have a motion, we have, uh, a, uh, second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Is there anybody in opposition? Nobody's opposing, so the motion, uh, carries and is approved. Thank you. Let's go to the next one.
As discussed in our meeting, um, replat of Marmion addition has been informed. We're still waiting on additional information on that plat, uh, so we'll move on to the final item on the regular agenda, which is a replat of West Haven Terrace, lot one, uh, two, block two.
What page is that on, Chris?
Uh,
I'm looking at the document PDF that was sent in. You guys have to excuse the noise in here, I'm in the middle of Charlotte Airport.
Seena, I believe it's on page forty.
Thank you. Perfect. Let's continue, Mr. Boone.
Okay. Um, so again, this item is a replat of West Haven Terrace lots one and two, block two. Uh, Richard Faust, the Faust Engineering Surveying, has requested approval of the replat of lots one and two into lot one A, lot two, uh, West Haven Terrace, Beaumont, Texas. The intention of the plat is to combine the two lots. Uh, Mr. and Mrs. Johnson, the owners, would like to place an accessory structure, uh, on the lot that they own adjacent to their house. However, per the zoning ordinance, special condition inspection twenty-eight point oh four point oh eight B eight, which states that when a property owner owns two adjacent lots and wishes to erect an accessory building on the lot that does not contain the main building, the accessory building must straddle the adjoining lot line. Um, there, however, there is no room for the new accessory structure to straddle the adjoining lot line of the Johnson's home. So therefore, what they're do, what they're asking is to essentially combine the two lots into one lot, uh, so that they can add the accessory structure. And with that, um,
Do they have a plan on, on the accessory building, or not?
Um, I'm sure they do, but, you know, with us just adding the, uh, doing the subdivision, we don't have it in your packet, I don't believe.
Okay, so there's nothing on the, on the property yet?
There's a house on the property.
Okay, it's just not shown.
Not on the lot.
Okay. Okay, great. Great. Is, uh, Mr. Faust in the meeting? Nope, so, uh-
Can you hear me?
Hello? Yeah?
Yes, sir. Yes, uh, this is, uh, James Faust with Faust Engineering, um, fifty-five, fifty East Tex Freeway, Suite O, uh, Beaumont, Texas, L A.
Great. Mr. Faust, you have any other comments to add?
Uh, no, the only thing is that we haven't, we haven't seen, uh, the plans for the building as well, um, so I'm not sure what the site plan for the building looks like, but, um, I think, uh, Chris explained everything, um, exactly like it goes.
Okay, so whoever's doing the flash, they, they know about the easements that are currently on the property, right? And the setbacks?
Yes, sir. Um, I have, uh, I have talked to the owner of the property. They're aware that they need to submit, um, a site plan to the city of Beaumont for permitting and for approval before they, uh, begin construction.
Perfect. Any questions from any of the members of the commission? No questions, we go for the public. Uh, is there anybody that would, uh, that would like to speak for or against this case?
Mr. Chairman, we get about fourteen notices, and we receive zero responses in favor and zero responses in opposition.
Right. Uh, uh, yeah, I have that in hand. Thank you. So with no comments from the public, uh, we close the public session, and, uh, I ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, uh, Tom Noyola here, uh, move for approval.
Thank you very much.
Roy Steinhegen, seconds.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Is anybody in opposition? Guys have it, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Faust, and thank you, Mr. Boone. So are we ready for the, uh, joint meeting?
Chairman, let me go to the waiting room and see if we can get a quorum.
Perfect.
Not sure about the other council members.
What is everybody doing?
Hey, Chris, this is Stony Pettit with Anderson Homes. Did I have something on the agenda today?
I believe you have the second dwelling on fifty-five, fifty-five second-
Yes, sir. Is that, is that gonna be gone over, or is that later?
Yes, sir. That will be the second item. There's planned to be the second item on the joint hearing, if we hopefully start here.
Okay, I apologize. Thank you.
No problem.
You may have a quorum, Chris. You might wanna check.
Yeah, Councilman Tate is here, Councilman Samuel, Councilman Petz, and I believe it's Councilman Neader.
I'm here, Chris.
Okay, Mayor.
Okay, so we, we can get started. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, uh, the meeting is yours.
Okay, y'all already had the regular meeting, then?
Uh, yes, ma'am, with it.
Okay, um, well, as usual, it's a little different because we're not there, but, um, we do have this joint public hearing today. We have a quorum of the Planning Commission and the, uh, City Council. Uh, we will hear each item, um, and it now would be the time for any citizen who wishes to speak on one of these hi- items in the joint public hearing to do so, because at the, it will be heard by the City Council in approx- approximately two weeks, and at that time, it will not be available for comment. That is the reason we have this today, and with that, I'll ask for the roll call of the City Council, please.
Mayor Ames?
I'm here.
Mayor Pro Tim Tate?
Here.
Councilmember Felchis, absent. Councilman, Councilmember Neal?
Present.
Councilmember Gett?
Present.
Present.
Councilmember Samuel?
Present.
And Councilmember Muthon.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Uh, we get it started with our first joint, uh, item. Mr. Boone?
Sir, our first item on the agenda for the joint meeting is twenty-four twelve P, a request for a specific use permit to allow a bar in a general commercial multifamily dwelling district, uh, at the property of thir- at thirty-five, uh, North Eleventh Street. And can everyone see my screen? Okay, can everyone see the screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, Flame two point oh Deacri and Bistro is applying for a specific use permit to allow a bar- to allow a bar in GCMD, General Commercial Multifamily Dwelling District. The facility will be located in an existing strip center on 11th Street. The property address of the property is 39 North 11th Street. Back in 2014, a specific use permit was approved for a bar at this location. However, it's been actually more than two years since that bar has closed. And as such, a new specific use permit would be required to reestablish a bar. In review of the application, utilities and drainage in the area are adequate for the proposed use. Existing parking will be provided on the lot. It should be, and it would be sufficient for the proposed bar. And let me go ahead and walk through the slides. The area, the strip center in question here is outlined on 11th Street, outlined in red. Again, it's just north of Smart Street. This is an aerial view of the locations. The site plan of the strip center. This, I'm sure you're familiar with, is the subject property. Across 11th Street to the east. Also to the east. Due to the southeast. Due to the south. And... We did, staff did mail out sixteen notices regarding this public hearing. We received zero in favor and zero in opposition. Staff is recommending approval of the application subject to the following condition. Number one, that no loitering signs shall be posted in the parking lot. And number two, applicant provides notice to meet school having property within a thousand feet of the subject property as required by state law. With that, are there any questions of staff about this application?
Any questions for Mr. Boone? Okay, is the applicant in the meeting? Chris, who did you say the applicant was?
The applicant is listed as Flame 2.0 Daiquiri. And let me see if I can get his name. Chris Segura? Is Chris Segura here?
No, it's Jeremy Reed.
Okay, Mr. Reed?
Yes, I'm here.
Can you tell us a little bit about the project?
Sure. Basically, I would like to open a daiquiri shop. Also be selling more stuff, like snowballs. So, I mean, that's pretty much it. This is going to be a little shack. And I will comply with all requirements.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, Mr. Reed, can you just get your address for the record?
It's 39 North 11th Street, Suite A.
Thank you.
Is it Mr. Reed or Reed?
Reed, R-E-E-D.
All right, Mr. Reed. Have you had one of these shops or have you operated one before?
Actually, no. I own a trucking company currently. And I also have contracts with the city of Houston Metro. Their procurement contract.
All right.
ESB certified.
All right, so you said something about daiquiri and you said something else, snowballs?
Yes, sir.
So are snowballs alcoholic also?
No, no, they would not be.
All right, so how do you mix these two with people that are going to be coming to your shop?
All right, so basically, I mean, you just arrive and you're able to order what you want. You know, if you're over the age of twenty-one, then, you know, we can sell you wine-based daiquiris. And I mean, that's pretty much, pretty much self-explanatory. So, yeah. In the... What? Yeah, but we'll also be selling food as well. That's pretty much it.
What kind of food are you going to serve?
I'm partnering with this guy right now. So a lot of this stuff is pre-picked or pre-prepped. So like egg rolls, just quick stuff.
Have you got a plan for this facility yet?
Yes.
All right, so you understand that when you're doing food, you're going to have to have the kitchen and you're going to have to have the grease traps and all the other related items?
That's correct.
Okay. And you have a way of figuring not selling to the minors, right?
Yes, sir. I, we have complied with TABC. And we're actually working close with them currently to just make sure everything is up to code.
All right. Does any member of commission have any other questions?
I've got one for Chris. Did we know in advance that there was going to be food involved?
Yes, so part of their application... I can read some of you.
The decay, it's on page fifty-four.
Fifty-four, thank you.
In their application, they say we'll serve food and non-alcoholic beverages.
Okay.
Alcoholic beverages, but it doesn't go into much detail, but it just says food.
Got it. Okay, I overlooked that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Anyone with the City Council have a question? Okay, not hearing any questions. Thank you, Mr. Reed. We're going to open the floor for public comment. Is there anybody that would like to make a comment for or against this case? I don't hear any comments, so we'll close the public hearing. We've heard from the applicant and also the staff. And I would entertain a motion.
I move that we approve file 2412P with the two conditions.
We have a motion and a second. Who seconded?
Macon, the only female.
You sound so much younger, Ms. Macon.
I know.
I just didn't recognize you. Thank you, ma'am. We have a motion and a second. Is there any comments? All in favor say aye.
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 Any in opposition? The ayes have it. Thank you. Good luck, Mr. Reed.
I appreciate it, guys. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Boone?
The next item on the joint meeting is file 2413P. It's to consider a request for a specific use permit to allow a second dwelling unit on one lot for a property zone or a single family. Danielle Goodwin of Anderson Homes is requesting a specific use permit to allow a house with a second dwelling in the rear at 6555 Claiborne Drive. Miss Goodwin's client would like to build a new home, including a pool house with entertainment space, a kitchen, and a full bath. As the structure is separate from the house and includes all the elements of a residence, a specific use permit is required. And let me go ahead and I'll show you the slides. Can everyone see the slide?
Yes.
So you can see the new lot. The area has not even been updated, but outlined in red is the yacht in question. This is a view of the site plan. You can see the proposed house here. Then in the back, structure is question. And again, we've included the floor plan because you can see there was some discussion about it being just a pool house, which it may indeed serve that function. But it does have, as you can see, a bedroom, a living room, a kitchen, as well as a bath with a shower. I believe it may even have a second story.
No, that's the main house.
This right here is the main house?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so this may be... Okay, so the accessory, is this accessory structure?
No, sir, that's the second floor of the main house. The back house only has one story.
Okay, just one story. Okay, correction. All right, and then again, these are just the view of the subject property. Again, it's an undeveloped lot. View to the west. And so, we did send out, staff sent out fourteen notices. We received zero in favor, zero in opposition. Staff is recommending approval of the application to the public to two conditions. Number one, the house will not be rented out. Accessory living space, although the space is not rented out. With that, are there any questions of staff?
Any questions for Mr. Boone? Thank you, Mr. Boone. Is the applicant in the meeting?
Yes, sir, Stoney Pettit.
Stoney, good afternoon. Do you have any other comments that you want to add?
No, sir, I was having a little bit of trouble hearing Mr. Boone's two comments, but the space is going to be primarily used as a pool house as well as guests of the residents. It will never be rented out or be occupied permanently.
And you understand that it cannot have separate utilities?
Correct.
Okay, great. Good. Any questions for Mr. Pettit? Stoney, did you give your address for the record?
It's Anderson Homes, 7770 Gladys Avenue, Beaumont, Texas, 77706.
Right, thank you very much. And I understand there's no other questions for the gentleman. Great, now we'll go to public comments. Is there anybody that would like to make comments for or against this project? None is heard, so we close the public hearing. And we heard from Mr. Pettit, the applicant. The house will not be a rental and will have the same utilities as the main house. Neither one is built yet. And with that, I entertain the motion.
Make a motion, we approve file 2413-P with the two conditions listed.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Any in opposition? No opposition, so it passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Mr. Boone?
Sir, the next and final item on the agenda is 2413P. It's to consider a request for a specific use permit to allow a wholesale shrimp company in an LI light industrial district. Mr. Nguyen has requested a specific use permit for the property located at 5620 Avenue A, also known as Westport Arthur Road. This property was formerly used as the Frito-Lay distribution center. The applicant would like to use the property as a wholesale shrimp processing distribution company. The proposed use would include the occasional removal of shrimp heads in shelling, but mostly sorting, packaging, and freezing of fresh shrimp distribution. Now, the applicant states that no product will be discarded into the dumpster. Any part of the shrimp that is not sold will be taken directly to the landfill. Hours of operation will be Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. All utilities are existing and adequate for the proposed use. Let me go ahead and walk you through the slides. Again, the site is outlined here in red on Avenue A. As you can see, the surrounding land use is either vacant or light industrial. This is a view of the, an aerial view of the property. View of the site plan. View of the subject property. A view to the north. A view to the east. And a view to the south. Staff did send out ten hearing notifications. We received zero responses in favor, zero responses in opposition. Staff is recommending approval. Subject to construction plans must meet all requirements by water utilities for water and sanitary sewer services, including any requirements of the city's pretreatment and/or FOG program. With that, are there any questions of staff?
Any questions? Okay, is the applicant in the audience or the meeting?
Yes.
And would you introduce yourself and give us your address?
Yes, my name is, I'm Nguyen. I'm on the 5620 Avenue A. I would like to open the dream process.
All right, sir. How many people are you going to be employing here?
It should be between ten or fifteen, ten to fifteen people, ten to fifteen.
All right, and you understand that you cannot have any waste material on the site, right?
Yes.
And you would move them daily out of the area?
Yes, I think with a landfill.
Okay. All right, great. Any questions for the gentleman? All right, no questions. Thank you very much. We're going to open the floor for the public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing. We heard from the city and also the applicant. It's going to be a shrimp processing plant. And he will have the waste removed from the site so to prevent any foul orders. And he's going to be employing fifteen to twenty people. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, Tom Noyola, so move for approval.
Great, Mr. Noyola, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
A second from Mr. Steinhagen. Any discussion or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? The ayes have it. Thank you and good luck, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, thank you very much. You can send us home.
Okay, thank y'all for coming. We are now adjourned.
Perfect.
Are for calling.
First word called meeting of the planning and zoning. Perfect. First, first control meeting of the planning and zoning successfully completed. Mr. Boone, thank you for your effort, and for the rest of the commission member, thank you. And so, thank you to the City Council. Have a great day.
Thank you.
You're up to it.
Thank you.